Happy about this agenda.
All right, good evening to everyone. August 20th, 2018, City of Mount Vernon Council meeting two quarter. In terms of the agenda, just one correction under motions, item number six has 2017, obviously should be September 17, 2018. But when you have an agenda of this length, there will be probably a typo or two.
I'm just hearing from others all night.
It's your size, magnitude of your business.
This is what happens when he goes out of town. With the noted amendment, I would move a pool of each other.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is communications. Does anybody that would like to address the council in the audience? So please come forward, name and address, please.
Sure, my name is...
Yep.
My name is Kristi Meyer. My family and I live here, we're residents of Mount Vernon, live on 15th Avenue Southwest. I'm coming before you again for a second time to ask that the city council address ordinance number eight, 2012A, an ordinance pertaining to animal protection and control, specifically section 55.21 livestock number four. This is a section that I feel is unnecessarily vague and poses a potentially dangerous situation to anyone who wishes to obtain a chicken permit through the city of Mount Vernon. This is a section that is directly included on the permit application and it must be agreed to and signed in order to be granted a permit. Section four and the application state that, and I do have copies if you want, just that part.
Yes, please.
So the section four and the application state that by the granting of the permit to raise chickens and the application thereof, the committee authorizes that the city or its agents have the right to go onto permitted's property anytime for the limited purpose of inspection of the premises to ensure that all applicable conditions have been met. Although I do not disagree with what I assume is the intention of this portion of the ordinance and the application, I will lay out for you again the reasons that I feel this section is unclear, unsafe, sort coercive, and potentially unconstitutional regarding privacy and property rights. The Fourth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution protects Americans from unreasonable searches and seizures by the government. I recognize the term unreasonable has varied over time and some searches require warrants while others do not. And my understanding this amendment protects a person and their property from searches by the government wherever there is reasonable expectation of privacy. I think we can all agree that a person's home is a place where there is a reasonable expectation of privacy and that we as a city should strive to create ordinances that do not unnecessarily put this constitutional right in question. I bring to the council that the statement in the ordinance in its current form and required agreement in signing the application for a chicken permit needs some clarification. In addition to my belief that the statement without clarification or changes violates my constitutional privacy and property rights, I also feel that in its current form it provides protection for a city official to be allowed onto private property in an unsafe manner which puts the residents of Mount Vernon at risk in a place where we have the right to feel safe. There are three primary areas of this section that I feel could use some clarification and I've underlined these on the handout that I gave you. The first is the city or its agents. There's nothing in the current ordinance which indicates which city agents are allowed onto private property. The 15-year-old lifeguard at the pool, the seasonal college student who is contracted to mow the ball fields, the city kitty who is listed as a formal member of the city staff, city council members. This gives Mount Vernon residents no protections as to the kind of screening this individual has been through or the relationship to the permit process. I believe this could easily be remedied by stating who or which city position is allowed or expected to do these inspections. If it is to be the Mount Vernon police, state that. If it is to be the zoning administrator, state that. I also think this individual should be required to show identification. The second portion of the ordinance which I believe should be clarified is the statement permitted's property anytime. This does not state anything about notification, where they can go, what is or is not professional or appropriate, et cetera. Are they allowed into the yard, the garage, the basement? Shouldn't they be required to provide at least some sort of notification to let you know they are there such as ringing the doorbell? If the intention is to check the chicken coop or pen, state that. I believe this could easily be remedied with clarification such as has the right to go into my yard with notification for the limited purpose of inspection of the above described chicken coop or pen. The third portion of the ordinance that should be addressed it states to ensure all applicable conditions have been met. It does not state conditions of what. It does not even mention chickens. Is it in reference to conditions for health, for safety of the chickens, of the owners of the coop, the length of my grass, the amount of junk in my garage? Again, I think it could use some basic clarification. The rest of this ordinance does a nice job of laying out very specific conditions that a resident of Mount Vernon would need to follow in order to keep chickens. In addition, the application for the permit asks specific questions as to the dwelling place of the chickens, including attaching a required drawing or picture of the coop or pen. Why not refer to these conditions specifically? A simple addition to the statement such as for the limited purpose of inspection of the above described chicken coop or pen to ensure all conditions as set forth in section 55.211, letters A through N have been met. In its current form, I strongly believe this ordinance is too vague and puts Mount Vernon citizens, including children, at risk while in their home. I believe that in its current form, this ordinance could legally protect an unscreened individual who provides some type of work for the city to come into my home without notification or identification and take pictures. I assume this is not what was intended by the ordinance, but I do believe that that is how vague and unsafe the statement is in its current form. Unfortunately, we live in a society where safety, especially in our homes, even from the government, needs to be prioritized and protected. I have included in the handout given an example of a rewritten statement which brings clarity and safety to the residents of Mount Vernon. It would not take much to add these clarifications and I ask you again to please take formal action on this issue. The proposed changes could be, and this is what you have in front of you, the second paragraph there, "I authorize by the granting of this permit to raise poultry and the application thereof that the city administrator has the right to go in my yard with notice and proper identification for the limited purpose of inspection of the above described chicken coop or pen to ensure all conditions as set forth in section 55.211, letters A through N have been met." Thank you for your time.
Anybody have a question for anything?
No.
Thank you.
And I guess if there, I'm not sure kind of how, when would I know if we're going to take action on this or not or what the next step would be?
Either Chris or Matthew will be in touch.
Okay. And if there's not, this is the second time that I've come to bring this up and feel that something again puts our safety at risk and so if I, what's the, you know, feeling like I did that in June and did not see any action from the council?
Yela or something in the next week or two. I'll make sure that happens.
Okay.
I am curious though, and this is not to be a smart ass or sarcastic by any means, but I've, during a home from work numerous times, a lion has been in my yard. Have you had the same conversation with the lions? Are they able to walk into your property or are you asking this of them as well? Because obviously it's the same thing.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not meant to be sarcastic, it's just an honest question. Because obviously they don't give us notice, they don't provide any sort of identification. They can show up wherever they want and do their job.
They do provide an application there. They have...
I've come home numerous times and they've been replacing meters or doing other stuff.
And they're not wearing a badge. They don't have anything, nothing that states who they are.
Matthew, don't you usually wear a badge?
Yeah, well, and I guess I do, I want to look at that and think about that. I don't have a response to it right now. I do take that a little bit offensive because I do feel like that was meant to be more of a snide comment than a straightforward.
No, it's not a question.
And but I guess in looking at this, I look at, we have ordinances, I live in a, we were very intentional in choosing to live in a town as Mount Vernon where we can feel that we have a council that can represent us. We have ordinances which I know you guys have even stated that are in their infancy and that there's, in my opinion, this is something that is unnecessarily vague and unclear, unsafe, and I think does violate some of my property rights. And so I do feel that this is something that we could easily change and address and I'm not sure, I'm not understanding why the council or administrators are resistant to that type of request for, to be addressed. And so, you know, I'm not sure kind of where about that. It does make me sort of start to lose faith in what my representation should be.
If I can really play, yeah. And I haven't, I don't have an opinion one way or the other as far as the ordinance goes. I just enforce the ordinance. The reason for the ordinance as it's written today is because we don't allow livestock at all. So when they open the door to livestock, they basically open the door, if you're going to agree to have chickens, which is considered livestock, on your property, you will agree to these conditions.
Right.
And so that's the reason the ordinance is written that way. As far as my staff, nobody would ever go to your house. There are, outside of the police officers, which go through a thorough background check, essentially three people that would enforce this ordinance. Myself, Matt, who will no longer be doing it in the next couple of months, and then Heather, who just got hired. All three have gone through background checks. But if you want to move forward with an ordinance change, that's fine. As far as violations of, you know, the Fourth Amendment, we can cite case law where that doesn't necessarily come into play, but...
Right, and I'm not at all...
No, no, no. I'm just, I'm not arguing for or against. When you brought the application and I simply couldn't sign it with the changes made. I don't have the authority nor does anybody in the community have the authority to make changes to an ordinance that's already there. But, you know, I can present your changes proposed to the city attorney and ask if, I essentially ask for his opinion.
Right.
I can tell you that because he oversaw the original ordinance, he's going to feel comfortable with the ordinance as written. If you want to move forward with an ordinance change, to clarify language, that's completely up to the council. I can ask the attorneys to review what you've suggested. After the last meeting, nobody indicated a desire to change without that, but I can obviously move forward with an ordinance change. So I don't want you to think that anybody is against, I can't make any changes myself, so.
Let's just have Bob review it and then...
Yeah.
And that's why, that's why I brought it here, because I was told exactly that, that no one else has authority to change except the council and that this was the only...
I wanted you to understand that most communities, livestock is, chickens in particular, are a hot button issue across the state of Iowa, period. But that particular language is put in that ordinance specifically as kind of like, yes, if you want to have chickens or go through having livestock, you're going to adhere to these requirements and allow us to come in and make sure that you're following the rules at any given time. So...
And again, I don't disagree with the, what I assume is the intention. It's not that I don't want people coming to check on it. I think they should, absolutely, for the health of the chickens, for the health of family, for everybody. I just don't agree with the way, I don't think we should just be willing to sign something that is vague and unclear and makes you feel uncomfortable just because we feel like that's the way to do it. And I feel that it could easily have a language change that would still get to that same purpose and not make people feel uncomfortable. And I have looked at other ordinances across the state and there's plenty, including Cedar Rapids and Irish City, that do not have this language.
No, and they're all, like I said, they're all different as far as councils are concerned as when, who, as it relates to who adopts them. Some won't allow chickens at all, some will allow chickens as freely as you want, and then some are somewhere in the middle like Mount Vernon's ordinance currently is, but...
Chris, so, we'll make sure Bob reviews your, what you have shared with us and then we'll be in touch because we're way, way, way over the five minutes. So is there anything else you want to share?
No, I just, yeah, I just want to kind of want to know what, where that actually will be.
I will get a copy before I leave tonight and I'll send it over to Bob and have him...
Can I just have one question? Have we had any other issues with anyone else that has chickens or has needed to sign this similar?
No, but I, you know, to Kristi's credit, I don't know that everybody understands when they sign up for a water bill that we have the right to go on and read your meter at any time without knocking on your door, which we do. And we've had a couple of dog bites because of it. So there are things that we already do that we don't have to provide notice for, which honestly, my staff probably takes a little bit for granted because we got that authority. So I completely understand where you're coming from. And again, if Bob is okay with the language changes, all he's going to do is make sure that he doesn't put the city staff in a position where they can be sued or anything like that. So that's what he's going to look at. And if you're comfortable with those changes, it's not a huge deal. I just, that was, when I went back and looked at the ordinance, that was kind of the give and take. They weren't crazy necessarily about allowing livestock in general and then the caveat to it would be if you come on and allow anybody to come in, then we would be happy with it. But no, I, you know, it's completely up to you. It's easy to review. We can send it over to Bob and have him give us...
Desmond, let's do it. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Does anybody else that would like to address the council? All right, consent agenda, approval of council minutes July 16, 2018, approval of liquor license for Bon Appetit, Glen Mauer, CDG, and Auburn PMP.
One thing to note on number three, Glen Mauer. Not all of their improvements are done, so even though you would sign off on their permit tonight, Nate still has to go back and assure that a couple of things were completed. Don't want to hold the permit process up in the meantime, but I just wanted to point out that there are some things in the building that need to be completed as well. So it's kind of conditional based upon that.
I'll move for approval, consent agenda. With that condition, as this present.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carries. Next item, public hearing, public hearing for the consideration of ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa by amending chapter 121.05 issuance and expiration. With that said, I will open the public hearing. Anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. See two, F2 ordinance 820-2018A, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa by amending chapter 121.05 issuance and expiration. Chris?
Again, this, both, both the public hearings on the ordinances tonight are necessitated by changes to the state code. I gave you the brief explanation on what is actually changing. This is just basically following state code, prohibition of texting and using mobile telephone while operating in commercial vehicles.
Anybody have any questions or anything for Chris?
So this brings us into alignment with this change, correct?
Correct. I will make the remark and it's obviously up to you individuals up here in terms of if you guys want to just do the first reading or if you want to suspend the rules and we can get right through, get to the final reading. Usually I wouldn't recommend that, but obviously this one and number three are ones that are basically just doing, cleaning up some basically routine stuff. So I just wanted to throw that out there in terms of it's completely up to you guys.
If we did nothing, I mean, state code overrides city code, doesn't it? Or...
Well, it would be a matter...
Not that I would suggest...
I don't can answer this better than I can, but it would be a matter of what they would fight under. So...
Okay.
Normally we have it in the city codes so we can write a city citation. If we don't, then they would be responsible to write it under the state.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's still a violation of law. It's just way... You're bringing your city code in compliance with state, state codes that you can enforce.
That's why I just made that. Because I'd be all hell for doing it, just following compliance. So again, it's entirely up to the council. I don't blame either one.
If you did that though, all four of you would have to be in favor of override. Yes, so three of you can pass the first reading, but if you want to override, you go to the very final reading. It would take all four of you to know the schedule.
So with all that said, I will entertain a motion. Are we in clean today? Yeah.
Yeah, I moved that we approve ordinance eight dash 20 dash 2018A as stated.
Second. Comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Are we addressing one reading?
Yeah.
You have to do their first reading first and then if you want to amend afterwards, you can.
Roll call please, Sue.
West, yes. Rose?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
Weisler?
For Jamie's point, I'm not generally in favor of this, but since we are just bringing this in line with state code, I would move that we suspend rules and proceed to the second, the third final reading for ordinance eight dash 20 dash 2018A.
I'll second that.
Any comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Weisler?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
All right. Next item, public hearing for the consideration of ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa by amending chapter 62.01 violation of regulations. With that said, I will open the public hearing. Anybody that would like to address the council. Seeing no one, I will close the public heating, public hearing, excuse me, proceed to F3, ordinance eight 20 dash 2018B, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa by amending chapter 62.01 violation of regulations. Chris?
I have nothing that's easy to clean up.
I move to approve ordinance eight dash 20 dash 2018B.
Second. Comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
And again, for the same reasons, since we're just stressing, not a big fan of it, but since we are just bringing it in line to state code, I would move that we suspend rules, move straight to the third final reading of the amendment to ordinance eight dash 20 dash 2018B.
My second.
Comments? No comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right. Next item, public hearing for the consideration of preliminary plat of Stoner Plaza ninth edition to the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa. Anybody that would like to address the council on this, open the public hearing. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. We will move to resolution eight 20 dash 2018B, approving the preliminary plat of Stoner Plaza ninth edition subdivision to the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa. Chris?
Didn't we just use 2018B?
This is resolution.
Resolution. Hey, I'm going to confuse you. I'm going to do it all right.
Well, good.
This is a, you won't typically see this either. You're going to see the preliminary final plat of the same packet. It's due to the fact that there's really like recreation of one lot. That would be lot one, that will be a buildable lot just to the south of Highway 30 and existing lot three of Stoner Plaza edition. Lot A will be future right-of-way and then out lot A is actually being sold to the property adjacent to the west so they can expand, park lots and...
And who is, I have no idea.
Angel to pay the open section. Could be the property that would be on there. But just for clarification too, out lot A is about 50 feet long. And as the developer, Dan Stoner, asked in relation to the improvements in the right-of-way, I asked that we not do that. I do not want a 50-foot section of street weathering, whether it's going to be trapped in between two other sections. So because the Stoners actually own the rest of the ground and have a preliminary plat showing this goes further, even if the city or if they were to walk away from this development, it's in entirety, lot one being created here has access already to the street. So we don't put the city at a disadvantage here by not requiring 50 feet. So I just wanted to point that out as well. But other than that, it's following the existing preliminary plat that was submitted. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
No.
And I attended that PNC meeting and there was not much other, some like a discussion about either lot one or lot A area or anything like that. Pretty clear consensus of support.
There's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number eight 20 dash 2018B, resolution approving the preliminary plat of Stoner Plaza ninth edition subdivision.
Second that.
Comments? Comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
All right. Next item...
I'm sorry?
Back F1.
Yes. I have a lot of arrows.
It's like his choreo.
I'm just trying to help. I know this is confusing.
All right, next item, ordinance eight six 2018A, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa by adding a new subsection, chapter 92.11, reduction of bills for water and sewer service. This is the second reading.
The only difference between your previous reading and the reading that you have in front of you is it did add language in there as it relates to mechanical failures, trying to cut out as much gray as possible but still be somewhat open, knowing that we cannot define every mechanical failure that might happen. But it does, I believe, give you me and the council, maybe it will come to me first and then the council that's appealed. Gives you enough definition to at least be able to formulate your own opinions. So the language that is in bold type is what is added to the rest of the ordinance, it's staying the same.
My only concern was in a, is letter C, and I can't remember if we talked about this or I was, I don't believe, but the one-year rolling average. And I know it's one of those, you know, green squirrel kind of scenarios, but if I were to move into a house that had been vacant for the last year, my first water bill is inherently going to be higher than the one-year rolling average. So under this, I could, well, there's an account bill.
In that situation, you're going to come out really, really well.
Right.
Because it's going to be divided well.
Right, yeah, exactly.
The scenario, I think that at the first reading that I said, if you're going to end up coming out on the losing end of this, it was you, that exact scenario was you move in after, you know, my family of five.
Right.
And you take my rolling average.
And now your rolling average to play again.
So that's, I mean, and we could...
Yep.
You can make a set.
And it does.
We can take a look at that.
Right.
On a case-by-case scenario, but for the most part, the rolling average.
Well, and actually, as we've written it, it's dependent on mechanical failure anyway. So if I'm using it normally, it wouldn't even apply. So no, I just thought...
But even so, it says what your rolling average of water used by the customer.
Right, yeah.
So that...
It gives us, it gives us some, not necessarily interpret, but at least to work with a citizen.
Yes. I thought this was a good improvement on the definition.
Chris has not had any comments or feedback from anybody, right? Correct on this? No phone calls from anybody?
This is a tough topic to address, so I'm going to make a motion to approve ordinance eight dash six dash 2018A, adding a new subsection, we've had a reduction of bills for water and sewer service.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call please, Sue.
West?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
All right. Move on to resolutions for approval. Item one, resolution eight 20 dash 2018A, approving the final plat of Screamin' Little Ice First Edition subdivision to the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa. Chris?
Well, if you haven't had a chance to go out and take a look, all the improvements are in there in page one. Kyle is in the audience. If you have any questions, Ben is particularly pleased with the improvements that have gone in and the communication between the engineer for Spelman, Colin Hall, and our engineer, Dave Shakerger. So, you know, no operation comes without a little bump in the road, but it's been extremely easy to work through those thus far. So staff doesn't have any comments, they're ready for houses to start new construction. They posted... rebuilding structure. They posted the bond as required. The punch list is complete. Everybody agrees to it. So at this point, we've come as far as we can, and now it's time to start building houses.
And I think as Tom mentioned earlier, the planning and zoning, this was voted, six to zero.
Been discussed, often a critique offered at different levels and so on. So we've been looking for a motion on resolution eight dash twenty dash twenty eighteen A, where the scoping of spring metals, spring metal height subdivision. I would make that motion.
My second.
Any comments? No comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
All right. Next item, item three, resolution eight dash twenty dash two thousand eighteen C, approving the final plat of Stoner Plaza Ninth Edition subdivision to the city of Mount Vernon, Iowa. Chris?
Nothing to add. Pretty much the same thing, yes.
PNC signed off.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution eight twenty twenty eighteen C, resolution approving the final plat of Stoner Plaza Ninth Edition subdivision.
Sorry.
Comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Weisler?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Next item, resolution eight twenty two thousand eighteen B, approving the real estate purchase agreement between the city of Mount Vernon and William and Marla Bright. Chris?
So staff is excited to bring this proposal to the council. This is the ground that we've been searching for, for a future compost site as well as public works facility. This is the ground, right there.
Just adjacent to Bryant Park.
Yeah, so there's a house. Their house, the Wright's home, will be in between the property that we own and Bryant Park. Little over eight acres. Can't thank Troy Logie enough for his work in all of this negotiation. So twenty-two thousand an acre, which is right about the going rate from all the subdivisions that have currently been going in. If we can get the property under our ownership, we would issue a check for ten thousand dollars for this money tomorrow and finalize this before the end of December, meaning if all things go well, we could start our own LEAP program potentially next year. For the council's benefit, that's about thirty thousand dollars in our leasehold contract, so.
Is there, is there like a hundred yards between the last house and outside the road?
There's a distance.
To west? I mean, is it?
You know what the distance is between them?
Is there not buffer between?
The compost site and?
Oh, there'll be plenty of, like, it'll be over the five hundred feet that we need.
Five hundred feet.
And I know it's beside the railroad, so it doesn't have, you know, very high nobility index, but it's probably got a very high CSR rating, so I'm sure we're ready for that. But probably a good use for that land. Our variable site.
Our goal is really to try and stay as close to the tracks as possible, so we didn't take any valuable ground. And it's so narrow that it is, it does have a decent corn suitability rating. However, it's just the narrow slivers that makes it kind of intriguing to farm. We also have some upgrades that will be made to Bryant Road that will be making contact with Lynn County. They have the equipment to do that. Then, once we can get back to the property, our, our public works employees can do a lot of the work in that situation, so.
So I know the long-term plan for this was to, or at least the original idea was to consolidate, get everything undercover, and I mean, we have, this land provides the size we would need to do that, plus LEAP program, and I mean, it gives us the ability to do that.
Yeah, to give you a rough idea of where our public works facility currently sits, it sits on, I don't wanna speak out of term, maybe not even two acres.
Like an acre and a half.
Yeah.
And how many was it?
This is eight point six.
Yeah, okay. And we would still have the other facility anyway, so.
Yeah, so what, what this does allow us to do outside of, you know, Nick working on the compost facility, is to construct buildings at a rate that we can afford to do such. So we really, from a practicality standpoint, see us looking at buildings in the neighborhood of under ten thousand square feet and probably multiple, each with varying degrees of heating and cooling. We don't foresee some large facility, but we do need a building that has a hot seat system, a car wash system in it for all the equipment. Right now, we actually go to the...
The car wash?
The car wash. So excited to at least get this under our ownership. As I stated, it'll be, it'll be over two hundred thousand by the time it's all said and done. There's a lot of CPs that will be taken off the survey and so on and so forth, so.
Probably factor in just the thirty thousand just by itself.
And the Wrights are aware of the smells that can come from composting.
Yeah, so the composting will actually go on the other side. And the other parts of this is, our goal with getting it under city ownership now is that we can start planting our buffers now, so by the time that development would happen to reach out to us, that they would be well established. And I have reached out to Troy as far as the home, hopefully trying to get a right of first refusal or something of that nature in the future, so we could potentially go all the way up for Bryant Park too, so we wouldn't have to worry about that as much.
Well, and to your point, Eric, well, not relative to the Wrights, but with, with the composting going in first before the development gets there, there's no, it's not like there's a whole development next door and now we're gonna put compost in. They know that they're getting where they come in later on.
Yeah, if I was just, the Wrights live, so they're gonna get some of that.
Yeah, it's dependent on that.
And I want to really point out, if we run into issues with composting in general, that doesn't eliminate the LEAP program pickup. It's just a matter of, we really need a place to allow us to do two weeks' worth of LEAP pickup, dump it, and then, you know, if we were to have to haul it, you know, into Lynn County at that point, we still can. It's just not wanting to run into Lynn County every time we have to dump. And right now, we don't have it. This will also allow us to clean up, but on slightly green space or whatever you wanna call it down by Highway thirty.
Yeah. So they will start planning what to do with that stress as well.
There's some rest coming like that. There's more to it.
All right. Jamie, I do want to state publicly, I am fully in support of the purchase of the land. I'm just abstaining from the vote to give the vote much later.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll never say a motion.
I would move approval of resolution eight dash twenty dash twenty eighteen B, agreement of purchase, purchase grant and transfer funds for the state between the city of Mount Vernon and William and Marla Bright.
All second.
Comments? No comments? Roll call please, Sue.
Rose?
Yes.
Weisler?
Yes.
Roddabush?
Yes.
All right. Next item, motions for approval, consideration of claims list.
Any changes or additions, and not having presented that I could know, I'll move them up. Claims list as presented.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Opened hearings? Next item, discussion consideration of an amended, amended twenty-eight E agreement with Lynn County Development Services for building inspections. Chris?
So the representatives of Lynn County are actually in the audience tonight, but so just a little bit of background, Lynn County Planning and Building Department has provided building inspection services for the city. They are trying to streamline their process and be able to answer to contractors and individuals that apply for permits in a faster, in a much quicker turnaround. The issue is usually on the city's side, so they're, the only, I would say, the major change with the twenty-eight is that contractors, builders, anybody applying for a permit would do so through Lynn County's offices versus coming to City Hall as they do now, so.
Do they currently come to both?
They currently come to City Hall.
Correct.
We fax it or, we scan it and fax it over or?
Email.
Email. We email it to them, and we are, they go between a lot. The only thing that I would say about building permits is a lot of the individuals that will come in have direct code questions that we can't answer, so we just refer them to Lynn County anyway. Well, if we haven't sent the permit over, then Lynn County doesn't exactly know what they're answering.
I guess my concern with it would be coming the other way, if they have code questions.
So the nice part is, is they're familiar enough with our code that they'll still have to provide a site plan, a zoning site plan for our approval. It just kinda cuts out the back and forth. And we did look, so just so everybody's aware, the city of Ely decided to not go with Lynn County and went and hired a building inspector. And I did meet with both the city administrator and the building inspector in Lynn County, but from a certification standpoint, they have a schedule that she will maintain to get certifications, but one of the issues that I have is the community wellness center is considered a commercial building. Cornell's buildings are all considered commercial buildings. The school has a whole lot of additional regulations as it relates to the building code. So we would have had to contract all of those inspections out with somebody had we decided to go with Ely. We don't count on the revenue coming from building permits as part of our overall budget, because we're not trying to fund anybody out of that. So I believe some of the other communities that was, their big push is to be able to maintain some of the revenue that they're getting. Ours is so up and down as far as development in its entirety. I wouldn't wanna sit here and try and count on that revenue. Even though we have two subdivisions, you know, I'm estimating twenty to thirty thousand, which wouldn't be enough to hire an inspector and pay for their benefits, so we'd be going the other direction. So as I stated, Lynn County is here. If you have any questions, or I can answer questions if you have.
Wasn't it from Cornell, Chris or Jeff Strites?
Yes, so you, no, as a matter of fact, he stopped in my office today, and he had kinda read the paper that we were considering, or looked at the agenda, and his point was that they have a good relationship with Lynn County inspectors and would prefer that the city make the decision to stay with them. And this was all, he submitted this letter all prior to my conversation with him, that the recommendation would be to move forward with that as well. So he was excited about that prospect, but not soliciting at all.
Well, the city's gone back and forth through the years with having a part-time person on our staff, and then the last I knew you were trying to do the co-op thing with Ely's person and so on. I think going with the county is a long-term sustainable option that takes it out of, takes it out of our hands a little bit, the day-to-day stuff with this. So I think I can see a downside to not going with, using the county inspection service.
Yeah, they're a big enough staff, but sometimes when we're looking at Ely, it's Ely and Palo have gone together, I believe, the two communities so far, and, you know, adding a third to the mix is how much time is that inspector spending in each community at that point. So one of the advantages of Lynn County is they don't have one building inspector. We have multiple depending on what is actually being inspected that day. So the commercial, like I said, the, the building code for residential is one book. It's all encompassing. Commercial is one book for every discipline, and then the NAC is kinda out by itself. So, you know, those with construction backgrounds can make that jump. There's nothing that says they can't, and I've worked with somebody that has done that. It took four years. And the biggest jump for them is to see or translate what they read to the field, because it's not as easy as looking at the diagrams of the building code. And one of the hardest things about the building code is it jumps. It has an exception for just about everything. So I've never had, in my two and a half years here, I've never had any quick question, Lynn County's interpretation of building code. So that to me says a lot to begin with. And, you know, this doesn't necessarily lock us into some long-term commitment that we can't get out of, but I'm always kinda, if it's not broke, let's, let's not try and do something.
It just makes sense.
My only question is this, in regard to convenience for our residents for submitting applications, does that have to be done physically in the office? Can they be, can they be done online? What options do they have?
Yes, may we address?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
If you would, please introduce yourselves.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Les Beck. I'm the Planning and Development Director. I also have with me Luke Maloney. Luke is our building official, and Andy Hendricks. Andy is our office manager. So to address a couple of issues, if we might, and first of all, thanks for your past support and hopefully continued support. Sounds like you've got Kyle Scoveland ready to build houses. We're ready to work as soon as he starts taking out permit applications. To answer a couple of questions that I've heard, so let's talk about the location, about making application in our department. We do have provisions that are sub-permits, so basically anything except a new home or new construction, so mechanical, electrical, plumbing, they can be made online. So, so a property owner or a contractor can apply for sub-permits online. We are moving toward electronic plans submittal. Once we get that in place, we'll be able to do any permit application online. As it is, we, we looked at the, the permit distribution since, I mean, Andy looked at since 2013, and there are about sixty-eight percent of the applicants are actually contractors. So a significant majority of applicants for permits in Mount Vernon are contractors, which means they come to us anyway. They know how we do business. They know our staff, and so it's not a duplication of effort for them to come to us. We have qualified staff. All of our inspectors are combination inspectors, so they can do foundations and footings and electrical and framing and plumbing, so they can do anything that's expected. I think the discussion with Mount Vernon is critical. Did you get a chance to look at the permits for Cornell? Or Cornell, I'm sorry, not proper.
Yeah, Cornell alone has had twenty-three million dollars in projects since 2012. So as an example, the new science building was a thirteen million dollar valuation, so we've been, you know, very involved with that project, which is just now wrapping up.
So we, we would be more than happy to answer any questions, you know, the, and we just went through this process with, with your neighbor, the city of Lisbon, and we went through a transition process with them. We provided a number of handouts and, you know, promotional brochures. We've checked back with Connie on several occasions. It's our understanding that transition has gone well. We would suggest a similar transition where maybe we take a couple of months to provide information at City Hall, so it's not, you know, a sudden cutoff that there's handouts or there's some promotional outreach effort to let your residents know we are doing this transition. So whether you wanna look at maybe a November one effective date to give us, to give your residents a little time to transition into it. One of the other advantages is the twenty-eight agreement is written so that the city will then be on the same code cycle. So when Lynn County updates the codes, which happens every three years, it's in the twenty-eight agreement that the city of Lisbon adopts the same codes that Lynn County is on. And Luke and our department will provide assistance in helping the city with those code updates. So in Lisbon as an example, they, you know, the contract...
So again, Lisbon as an example, they, you know, a contractor or an individual comes in and has a plan and they submit it. Do, if they have county-specific questions, obviously they would speak with Nick and you guys. But if they have Lisbon code-specific questions, where do they go for that?
The Lisbon code, the Lisbon code is the county code.
Now, if you're referencing zoning, they would probably refer back to, I believe, Dave. Are you guys doing, so B K actually does theirs. In our instance, if they have zoning-related questions, it would be referred back to Heather.
Okay. Who's Heather?
Well, I should say it'll be referred back to Matt first.
Okay.
In the next couple of months, more and more things will be transitioned to Heather. So I'm just getting used to saying Heather.
Okay.
They would be referred back to her.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris. That's an important distinction. We will not administer the city's zoning regulations. What we'll do, we'll get an approved zoning site plan or zoning permit from the city which signals to us that it's good on your end and therefore we can, we can move forward.
But from a building code standpoint, are we, forgive my ignorance, but are we similar to Lisbon in that our code is the county code or do we have our own?
Yeah, our code is the county code. The issue that comes into play again is if the updates are missed. And yeah, we transitioned from, they adopt 2006 and we're, and still in 2003. They happen to cite something out of 2006. I mean, so there is.
But to your point, that would be addressed per the agreement with.
That is addressed through the 2080 agreement, which stipulates that the, that the city, and Lisbon agreed to this also, that the city adopts Lynn County's code ordinances. So for instance, we just updated from the 2015 code cycle or in the process of updating from the 2015 code cycle to the 2018 code cycle. It happens every three years.
So is that the sort of thing per the 2080 where as soon as the board of supervisors amends it or approves it, would it come back to us and we would then approve it?
We would have to amend as well, in our ordinance. What's nice about this is, and I'm assuming I haven't looked, but I'm assuming Lynn County has their own specific amendments to each code. They probably do a thorough job of revealing all the changes from addition to addition. If we don't have to do that, that would be.
And as long as they've got to follow one, we may as well have them just follow it and then screw around.
How does this, we have three national historic districts. How does this plan to historic preservation?
To zoning site planning.
Okay.
So that's.
And they have, they will have our historic maps. So, you know, you can still follow along by address. And we're working on getting all of that on the JIS system. And so it, there will be some back and forth, obviously, between staff. But the biggest difference obviously being that they don't necessarily drop their building plans off to us, which especially sit at City Hall until we get them shipped over to Lynn County.
Can I briefly address that? So we think this is another advantage of amending the agreement. We looked at, for the city of Lisbon, we looked at the turnaround time on permits. And the average turnaround time was about 18 days from the time a permit application was received by the city of Lisbon to the time that we issued the permit. We discovered that 12 days was in the hands of the city of Lisbon. Our normal permit turnaround time ranges from four to six days.
Keep savings.
That makes me feel better.
Could, could anybody else have any questions?
Nothing. You've been feeling badly before.
Anything else you guys would like to share?
Just a quick question. Where do you office at? Are you in the county building across from Pennington?
Ingredient.
Thank you.
So does the November 1 effective date sound reasonable in terms of, you know, providing a little orientation and transition period? Or is this something you want to just do now?
I like the November 1 date just so that, because we're transitioning with Heather, that gives everybody an opportunity to kind of get familiar with it.
Think that makes sense.
And we'll take all the brochures and. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Hope that's it. I'll entertain a motion.
I would take a motion to revise 2080 inspection services units in Lynn County planning.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of an order accepting acknowledgement settlement for a second violation of Iowa Code 453A.21. Williams Public Grove. Chief, can you speak to it or Chris?
Free suffix, by the way, sorry.
So that's it. I'll entertain a motion for this.
I would move acceptance of the acknowledgement and settlement agreement. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of scope of services and cost proposal for the update of the city of Mount Vernon subdivision ordinance. Chief Tom, Chris?
So we've just, and you'll see that we're setting a date, a couple items down for the zoning code. And it makes the most sense to rewrite into our subdivision ordinance, which is even to a certain extent more cumbersome than our zoning code. So the total project cost of $9,774 reflects not quite a year's worth of work that will be spent on this, this ordinance. There are a number of things that Matt and I have identified as we've gone through the last two subdivisions and where we contradict ourselves from one code to the next. So either staff would have to be doing this or we're just allowed Chad from E C C O to continue moving forward with this.
So it makes sense.
The only thing I have about it is their hourly rate. You would think it would vary, especially in something like staff time for copying by the ordinances for dissemination to the city. It looks like either they average it out or they're using the same, that's what they use. But you normally see like 120 for something and $50 if you're copying and stuff like that. It always throws up a flag for me when I see just one rate applied to everything.
I'm guessing this must be a blended rate.
That and E C C O is on a big staff. So Chad does a lion's share of the work on the entire project. So we don't have any contact really with anybody else outside of Chad. Would be my only comment is that very well, it will likely be him and him alone. And part of the reason the zoning code took so long is he had a health issue. So you just, there wasn't anybody there to kind of pick up that tab. If.
So he's the only one?
He's the only one working on this project. There are other people in the office that could. There's just a level of comfort with, with Chad and the familiarity with.
Yeah, but what I'm saying here is he's doing most of this, but then this intern comes in, he copied his stuff. So he's not doing it. The intern's doing it at $30 an hour and he's no longer doing.
No, and I can't bring it out and I can't specifically speak to the proposal. I can tell you that at $9,700, it's a, about two-thirds of what a private consulting firm would do.
And if we were to have you guys do it, as you mentioned.
We'd be talking about this five years from now.
And it would take you. And it's, and it's time that you're not doing other stuff that needs to be.
There's a lot of research that has to go into this. And even though I'm a certified planner, I wouldn't be able to do that and this at the same time. So in an effort of time, I would say this is well worth it.
I understand it's worth it. He, he just, just didn't, some of the say to him maybe is.
Absolutely understand where you're coming from.
Like you said, people see that and they just.
I noticed that as well.
We don't need a motion or anything with this, right?
We would, so you can sign it.
Then I would move approval of these subdivision ordinance as presented from E C C O.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Discussion and consideration of filling the council vacancy.
So staff just needs direction on this item. If, if it is your choice to appoint, we would have to place a public hearing notice in the paper for less than four, no more than 20 days prior to the decision. Your first chance of having that discussion would be the first meeting in September, which is set until later this year. But the nice parts about the timing of all of this, though, is that there is an election coming up in November. There's still, I believe, two to three weeks of time that somebody could get the signatures necessary to be on the ballot. It's not a significant number of signatures needed. So I think staff's recommendation would be just to let this go. The reason I say that is if you're going to appoint, and we do that at the next meeting in September, or we make that motion, somebody could petition then for an election to occur, which is going to occur after the date or the, I believe, the blackout period that the Lynn County auditor has for getting anything on the ballot. So you would have especially election after the November election.
It costs the city three grand.
Potentially three to six.
And I already know of a citizen's going to do that. So you're going to, you're going to cost the city three grand by staying.
Yeah, like I said, the timing actually works out quite well. It's probably best just to, I do know of one individual that has indicated they would have been okay being appointed or running. So, but.
Like there's a appeal of the law there?
Yeah.
Which is good.
Yeah. So I just wanted to get kind of your direction. I would just reach out to Lynn County tomorrow and inform them if we're going with the election. There's no formal vote that needs to occur.
So just so I understand, so we're proposing that we not appoint anybody for the meetings? Or we essentially got four, it would be, they'd be able to fill four meetings, correct?
Four meetings.
Because if we, if we went the appointment route, we would do it at the, theoretically. I mean, if all the things line up right, we'd do it at the September meeting, the first one. So then they would be seated, the second meeting is September. So you got one, two in October.
They wouldn't be seated at the first one in November.
Right, but then following that election, whoever got, so you'd have those four meetings theoretically that they would be.
Okay.
But it is possible that whoever is elected in November can take that role right away, correct?
They would take that role right away. As soon as the votes are canvassed, then they can take the oath of office. Chances are they wouldn't be there until the second meeting in November. But yes, they would take that right away.
And based on, and so, so what you were saying earlier, Chris, if we were to appoint somebody, somebody else could then petition for an election for that seat, which would then, based on the rules of the elections, push that one past when the already scheduled November 1 is going to take.
Because they couldn't, they couldn't, they couldn't, they wouldn't. The petition, my understanding is the petition wouldn't be valid until after you actually made the appointment. Then they have 10 or, see, 10 or 14 days to petition. So now you're talking about the end of September. And then you're getting it in October. And I believe when I talked to Lynn County, they have a blackout period.
There's like 20 days.
Yeah. You would have to schedule a special election.
So then all of a sudden, we're, we're going after what was already scheduled. And, but if we acquainted somebody, would they still be seated while that whole thing was going on?
Yes.
Okay.
You could, and she did make the comment that she'd never seen it before, but you could appoint and still have the election. But with only four potential meetings between now and the election, I don't know that we have anything that would require a full council at that point. And it would probably either disadvantage or advantage.
I guess my other, and this is just, you know, you don't need necessarily speak up, but are we, are all four of us planning on being here for those four? I mean, I don't want to not have a council to ensure if, if we've got.
I just wanted time here, so.
Yeah, exactly. Obviously unforeseen things, but nobody has a month's vacation coming up that we need to factor into this.
Honestly, typically it does not require, very, very few votes require four. And it would be more so if the mayor were to veto one of the motions, it would take four to override the, you know. But other than that, outside of, like I said, waving ratings on ordinances, there really isn't a ton that requires four votes.
You got what you need?
I do.
Okay.
Next item, discussion and consideration of setting a public hearing date for amendment to Chapter 165 zoning regulations, 20, or I'm sorry, September 17, 2018.
I think that's a good idea given the, for that document.
Yeah, I can't say enough to the planning commission.
I'm waiting for it to come out on DVD.
They literally have to hang it by page to the entire code.
Should we send them cake or something? Well, then I would move approval with our thanks to those folks, setting a hearing, public hearing date for the September 17, 2018 city council meeting. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of alternative council meeting dates for September 3, 2018. Obviously, that's Labor Day, so.
Yeah, in the past, you've gone either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Either day's good for me. Any difference?
Yeah, I'm fine with either as well.
Tuesday's fine with me. Either works.
Tuesday or Wednesday, whichever. If Tuesday, which for people to.
Do you motion?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to go with the, I'll assume the date of Tuesday, where the first meeting is.
Might be September 4th. But second?
I'd second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, sorry. Just firing all cylinders.
Next item, discussion and consideration of change order one for the First Street Culvert replacement project.
As I stated in my staff report, I actually approved this last Friday to keep this project moving forward. The change order is in the amount of $3,870.55. If you had a chance to go out there and look at it, the, if this is the current driving surface, there is another layer of concrete underneath about 75% of the way.
It's crazy how narrow that.
It's an older, narrower street.
If you would have, we would have had to do core sampling, which we didn't expect to run into. I will say that for a contractor that has not done a ton of municipal work in this regard, very impressed so far with what we're seeing out of that group from the compaction to the soft cuts and dirt removal. Did some work with the neighbors. So very happy so far with the work that's been done. If they're ready, well, now they hope to be done by next week.
That'd be good.
Does this push? Does this push the timeframe back too far or no?
No, they asked for an additional day after the day. Their hopes are four tomorrow. But again, it's all weather dependent. We got more rain today than I think we expected, so.
Well, I appreciate that you made the call to keep it moving. Because it is definitely, you know, I'm hearing about it. And with schools starting, I think it's important to get it done. So thanks for.
I'm going to go on vacation when we do the wagon pass.
Do you need a motion since it's already been approved?
I do.
Change order number one of the First Street Culvert project.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion and consideration of farm lease terms for city-owned property in the Stonebrook subdivision.
So the current space that's designated for a park and what would be considered Stonebrook 2, here, I see it on this map, that this area actually lies right here, was being farmed by. Was being farmed by the stoners while they owned it, but now that Brickless has purchased it, we don't have anybody to do anything with it. It's overgrown with weeds. There is an individual that has asked, had asked after I first arrived in reference to any of our down that he would love to make hay at any one of our locations. So we approached him about this location, taking it over for at least the next three years. I can honestly tell you, Matt and I had this conversation. I don't foresee this park being under construction within the next five years, below in the next three. If we do anything three years or below, we don't have to bend this out. But he's proposing to maintain it for the rest of this year and plant it for his hay for consideration of a dollar per acre for the first year and then seventy-five dollars per acre of the following two. So we feel that's fair. We don't have the equipment to maintain this area. BK has surveyed the park so they know where the mowers are.
And you say it's already being farmed, so it's not like it's gonna be.
It was being farmed.
Yeah, it was, okay. So are there neighbors adjacent to it? I mean, are we gonna?
So some of the neighbors have actually encroached onto it.
Here we are.
And I believe, Matt, have you talked to most of them yet?
About this?
A couple of neighbors have come in and find.
Have you encroached in or off the park?
They encroached.
Specific question there. Yes, I have talked.
I have not, have not addressed the neighbors.
What kind of encroachment are you talking about?
Uh, they're mowing about thirty feet into our, into our.
Just mowing and not planting trees and stuff like that?
Well, no, one individual has planted some trees and flowers and so forth.
The trees are, the mowings are good, that's fine.
Yeah, well, he's mowed around it and then planted it and it looks nice, but I told him that, he brought me out there. He wanted to show it to me that he was doing that and he told us that he was encroaching on our land and he wanted to know what the city's plans were. And I said, well, my response was, I cannot guarantee this is gonna stay here because it's not within the city plans of the park. We don't have.
It's not his property.
Correct, so I said, you know, if you're asking for my permission for you to have this here, I can't give that to you. So he's aware that that may not exist, but the other neighbors next to him are mowing thirty feet into the parkland. He's mowing that space.
So further to answer your question, the individual who would maintain this actually was in Stonebrook. So his neighbors with these people as well.
I just, I guess my, my only concern being if this had been, you know, if nothing had been happening with it and then all of a sudden, we're gonna have farm equipment and hay making going on. But if they, if it's farmed.
Very similar to the property that the school has.
Yeah.
If I may, I was approached by one of the neighbors asking what we were gonna do with the property because the growth is so high and they're worried about rodents and worried about other things. So.
So having to maintain.
To a council meeting, a staff meeting, talked about it and this is what we came up with.
Might some else help with it be done?
We have a stickle mower, which we could.
Yeah, that would work.
Down, but it wouldn't look very pretty. And the hardy button, like I said, isn't technically designed to go out and do this.
Not worth the labor for it?
Well, yeah, it's gonna take care of it and make you useful.
Have they created piles of like refuge, you know how they put their stacks of stuff back in the back?
There's nothing of that nature. They're not dunking their grass. They're not making refuge piles or anything of that.
It's unusual.
Yeah, and it's not that I can see, it's not that I can see. So I haven't gone back into the property.
Because it's fairly high, it's over probably sixty, seventy.
Exactly.
That they are.
That's the surveyor.
You know, there's, there's some playground equipment on it and this and that.
Matthew? I assume you're on motion, Matt, Chris, to approve this?
Yeah, to approve the conditions and then Bob will put out an agreement. I would say the lease term is basically for three years, one dollar per acre for the first year, seventy-five dollars per acre for the second two years.
Move that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Are you lazy here? You know.
It's documented in the.
Yeah, it's, you know, relevant to agenda item J nine, I would move the lease agreements as outlined in the agenda item.
There you go.
Tom with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next item, reports, Mount Vernon Police Report, Chief, anything you want to highlight for the council?
Yeah. Good three of them.
Um, nothing, nothing additional for the report. I just wanted to take a moment to put out to the public that next week I am working with Joe. The city's been taking some complaints about parking issues up on the main street district. So I'm kind of coordinating an early morning meeting with hopefully a bunch of business owners and have them come up so that we can really, I think everybody has a little bit different version of what their parking issues are so we can kind of get them collected and then kind of full scope, look at what's going on or what we can do to kind of mitigate some of those. We've had some requests for removal of parking over by Avenue and First Street because of visibility and different things like that. And as you guys know, and probably hear frequently too, parking is kind of premium in the uptown area, so removing spaces is difficult. And so I think just starting with the conversation and really getting everybody to, hopefully to the same table, getting business owners and people who live or live above the businesses and things to really utilize the parking lots that we do have. Generally, there's, there's spaces available in the south parking lot, especially in the lower lot area. They would open up the parking area, so really trying to facilitate that conversation, but also listen to them and get their mindset of what they're seeing specifically in front of their businesses too. So we're gonna have that meeting here at City Hall, August twenty-eighth at eight o'clock, so in the morning and hopefully we'll get some good discussion.
Okay, thanks. Any questions for Chief? Next item, Mount Vernon Public Works Report. Nick, anything?
Nothing to add.
Anybody have any questions for Nick? All right, next item, Mount Vernon Park and Recreation Report, Matthew, same question to you, sir.
Uh, I do have something to add. Just wanted everybody to know that tomorrow night, we'll be discussing the Park and Rec Board, the five-year anniversary of the dog park and how we might celebrate that. So everybody be aware of that.
Great.
Wonderful. Any questions for?
Any new input on the homeowners in regard to the trade you have?
No, nothing to report.
Okay.
Dave and I have not had a chance to coordinate that yet.
Okay.
Tom?
Kudos to Partial Rec for being acknowledged in the Iowa League of Cities, that can be his cityscapes, Iowa League of Cities, Megalodon, before his Chocolate Walk Report. So ample publicity, positive publicity and so on. It's not about the runabout, so that's good to have.
Thank you.
All right, next item, the, okay. Next item, Mayor Report, just a few things. I'd ask Tom, if he would be interested in being Mayor Pro Town, and he has rightfully said yes, so make that quote and vote official. And then tomorrow, we have interviews for Director of Lisbon Mount Vernon Ambulance. So that'll start at three o'clock, so hopefully we'll be able to identify a qualified individual to fill that vacancy. Something more to come on that as well. Other than that, council, any council reports, committee reports, anybody? Chris?
Um, just real quick, Workman's Comp was here, did their facility study. Got a lot of positive comments from the inspector, which is something we've been striving for for the last couple of years. Hopefully we'll start seeing premiums go down after a three-year, new three-year window, so. Thank you to my staff for that. Safety upgrades have actually started on Saturday. They started pulling cabling and the windows are supposed to be delivered tomorrow. So the safety upgrades at City Hall will be progressing here through the rest of August and first part of September. Heather, the new associate planner, has started with revamping or kind of rehearing up the sidewalk programs. Our goal is to get everybody in the northwest quadrant to hopefully complete it and then start the northeast quadrant. At least inspections this fall with spring's proposed construction. And then I really may ensue a week with this agenda since the auditors were here last week. This was her reward, was to get this long meeting, so. Nothing, I don't believe was too significant when they were here, so I looked for a good report. I expect to see, as I told the mayor, we get dinged on the same thing year after year and I don't foresee that changing this year as far as us being a small staff and oversight. So we take as many precautions as possible, but they're always gonna point out something, so.
I met with them on Wednesday. Did they wrap up on Thursday? It sounded like.
They did Thursday.
They were pleased with what they were doing.
Later on Thursday. The only other thing I have is just kind of a reminder to the public that Cornell starts moving in this week. So it will be chaotic around campus for a little bit. There will be no parking on First Avenue on Wednesday.
First Street Wednesday.
First Street on Wednesday.
Chris, in regards to the sidewalk program, you mentioned that Heather is working on both properties that are not in compliance?
There were forty-two on the original list. There have been a few that have.
Just northwest?
Yeah, just northwest.
And remind everybody in terms of what the next steps are for those that are not in compliance?
So the next steps are, we will actually work with the attorney on pushing them to complete the projects. If they do not, then we will work on assessing those projects and most likely completing them at the same time we complete the improvements on the northeast quadrant and then just assessing them back to homeowner. We do have a few individuals from the northwest quadrant that got in or came in too late before the city had bid out the previous project. So they will actually go with the northeast quadrant and have agreed to it already, just a timing issue, so.
And are the same funding mechanisms through the city still available to those folks if they?
If they comply, yes, if they do not comply.
Right.
Got you.
Then how does it work for the staff though? There's a few properties I noticed walking this past weekend where I don't know if there's cracks or, but more than anything, it's just the grass that's grown up in between the sidewalk. Are those properties being treated how?
Uh, those are actually, in some instances, would be considered a nuisance just because they're tripping hazards. I will say this, in that instance, I would encourage citizens to formally submit a request for action form. We don't have an active nuisance program. We always go based upon complaints.
Right.
So.
Because a lot of it I'm really thinking of, I don't know how it was even inspected, just because, I mean, there's so much grass and weeds grown up between the sections of concrete.
Yeah, and a lot of times that, that grass that grows up tends to occur over the summer months because they tend to be weeds.
Yeah.
Most of what Jordan did obviously was early spring, so most of it wasn't present at the time. And again, some of the panels that are cracked significantly are scheduled to be replaced. I know at least three that I can think of, as Heather and I do go out and kind of walk through what constitutes each one of those panel descriptions. And I can think of three or four right around you that are actually in violation and will need to make some corrections. There is one that has more grass than sidewalk.
Both of those I'm referring to are rental properties.
Yes, and I will say that there's five companies that leave under the same ownership out of the forty-two.
Yes. I'm sure we're referring to the same.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious because, yeah, it's not very safe walking for sure. Anything else?
I just want to say in regard to the community development group, tomorrow night, they're having their volunteer recognition at six-thirty. And one of the things I did talk to the board about is it's a little bit more visibility on the part of what they're doing and sharing it with the council. And I think not, it doesn't necessarily have to be Joe himself, but I think the board is going to start having a little bit more visibility in attending some of the council meetings.
Good.
Just to.
Especially with the new president?
Yeah.
Anything else? No further business, this meeting stands here.